All right, I got five o'clock, recall meeting to order. Roll call, we have all board members present, including our two student representatives. Addition's agenda, do we have, we did have a few.
Yes, there were two additions to the agenda that came in today, um, there were a couple of resignations to make note of.
And with that, uh, looking for approval of agenda. Have a motion from Cheryl?
Second.
Second from Bruce, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Post say no, carry. And we have nobody here for public comments, we'll go on to the consent agenda. And we'll start with you Cheryl with the bills.
Okay, I have a chance to go through the bills. I made note that we paid West Central Ed District, which is an ongoing expense. Just want to mention that there is an expense to that, it's not a freebie for us. And the Branson tour, a big payment was made onto that, which the kids are really looking forward to. Cheryl doesn't get to go. And also, um, bills coming in for, um, indoor air quality project.
We're finally, we're getting near the end, yes.
Other than that, it's always pretty much normal and pre-fooled.
And then we did have our minutes for the last two meetings, uh, enclosed in there as well, so if we get questions there, other than that, we'll go to you now for personnel.
Um, so the hires are pretty standard at this time of year, um, overloads, one of the things I will note is that, um, we do have significantly fewer overloads this year than we've had in years past. Um, and that is one of the areas where we really looked at making some reductions, so I believe the number was, um, from fifteen to eight, um, or sixteen, it's, and I can pull it up and look at it, but that's, that was our, our shift and, and we really made a cognizant, um, effort at the secondary to limit those, um, those overloads. The, um, early childhood and, um, those sessions are, you'll notice, are going to be consistent with, um, the way that we've done this in, in years past, these are not new personnel, um, but they, they are, um, our, they are our consistent preschool staff. Um, we do have an NHS advisor, which is great, um, Ben Boarding decided to take that on, which was, a really great addition for NHS, um, kids, they were kind of, uh, anxious to have an advisor to start off the school year, so we were, we were glad that that worked out. Um, and then you'll see our middle school, or our seventh, eighth grade football coach and our three act, uh, advisor are on for hires as well. Resignation, you'll see, uh, we have a pack, uh, we have a pack of food service. Um, our technology director, uh, submitted his resignation today. Um, he has an opportunity, um, for a greater leadership position, so we're, excited for him. Um, I'm, I'm excited for him to step into a new, a new leadership opportunity, but it's obviously gonna be a difficult position for us to fill. And then, uh, Courtney McInnes, our custodian at the high school, um, found an opportunity where she can spend some more time with her family, so, I think those are things that you obviously acknowledge and recognize, and then we have a leave of absence that is a pretty standard approval.
Um, that look for most improvement, send agenda for them.
Gosh darn it, thank you.
Can we add that in a separate line?
I looked at it, the donation today is actually really cool, um, so, this is, it's, kind of funny, it just says wood, but what this is, is this is, um, a couple of pieces of, um, beautiful black walnut, that is going to be, that was donated to our innovation center. Um, and our students then get to make a number of projects out of that black walnut, so they come down and it's, it's some of the logs that they saw, in the spring and they do the, the rough cut lumber, but then they are able to just make beautiful, beautiful pieces of work with that, so, what we do is we take a look at how much that would cost us if we were to go buy it, um, and it's approximately twenty-one hundred dollars worth of wood, so it's a, and it's like, an acknowledged donation, but, um, it just is so amazing for our, uh, our wood shop and our innovation center to have access to that, so, thank you to Arlene.
All right, uh, look for motion, those you Bruce, uh, motion from Bruce.
Second.
Second from Rick, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Post say no, carry. And communication items, let you know.
So I'm gonna start with our stra- our strategic plan tracker, so the last time we pulled this up and took a look at it was, um, in July. So we'll kind of take a look and, and again, I'm tracking with colors, so if you look at the, the color movement, you'll see things moving from July to September. Couple of pieces just to, uh, to note up, make note of, um, the first, in, in the first column in exploration, we're still looking at how we can utilize, character strong and seven mindsets to pull in for some professional development, um. Probably the more, I guess, um, immediate piece there is the yellow, which is the, uh, cultural, culturally responsive staff development after the World Cafe, and review of the, um, staff development, um, the professional development, um, requirements within the state of Minnesota and within our, our funding, I guess the funding that we set aside for professional development. So on Friday, we have a, um, an opportunity for a speaker to come in and work with all, um, with K twelve, uh, certified staff, and, um, doing some work about, um, kind of our own experiences and how our own experiences drive our perceptions in good ways and in, in bad ways, and then how we, um, how we examine those and look at that, and then, um, look at how we, foster our interactions and relationships with students, so it's gonna be a pretty, a very full, um, engaging day, um, it also does meet the, um, the requirements for some of those, uh, recertification for our certified staff. One of the things that the professional development committee has worked hard to do is make sure that when, over the course of a five-year cycle, um, the, the district has opportunities to meet the requirements of our continuing education for our certified staff. Um, some staff already have, have met it, other staff, you know, will need, need it again later, but, um, it's kind of a two-pronged, twofold purpose for, um, for the in-service on Friday, so, the professional development committee has, has done some good work with that, and I know Cheryl sits on that committee as well, so. And then, uh, the other things that I want to just call out that are in implementation right now, we have the operating referendum campaign. We have had two, um, community meetings, and I was invited into one of our, our, um, local faith organizations to, um, have conversation over coffee. Um, those are, um, they've, there's been a minimal, um, attendance, I would say, um, at the, the two that have been hosted, the ones that we hosted, there's been good questions and good comments, which I think are, are helpful for me to know what other information people need, um, and then I can continue to try to, whether it be, in newspaper articles or in, um, adding it into the presentation for future dates. Um, but there is a, we're, we're actively getting information out, I'm hearing a lot more conversation, uh, in the community this round, which I think is great. Um, so I think people are hearing, it's just a matter of, of making sure that people are asking questions when they have, uh, questions, and that, um, information is, that's shared is, is accurate, you know, I think that's one of the things that, I continue to be concerned about is, um, assumptions versus people asking questions. And that's one of the things that we're clarified at, at some of the meetings, which was great, so. Are the questions kind of consistent, are you seeing a theme or not really? No, I mean, they're kind of, it, it kind of is, depends on who comes, because they usually have their own, you know, question or concern. So, um, hopefully after the next couple, we'll be able to, um, have a little bit more understanding if there's a, a vein, or a common theme. Um, and then too, just, uh, um, I do continue to work with, um, our consultant with our Buildings and Grounds FTE. You know, I think that's, that's certainly something that I, um, will be dependent, and I've, and I've put this in, um, the slideshow as a, ongoing discussion if the referendum does pass, to really make sure that we have the right staffing complement within our Buildings and Grounds Department. Um, but in the meantime, you know, it's, and, and as you look at the agenda later, I'm gonna be having an update about our football field, and some of, of the electrical issues that we've been having, um, so it certainly has been difficult not having a director of Buildings and Grounds. Um, but I, it has really been beneficial to have somebody who is, is in, um, ingrained in schools and understands the dynamics of public education and what we do from a Buildings and Grounds, um, and facilities perspective, so just wanted to make note that that is an ongoing, ongoing area that we, um, are looking at. Um, any questions on the strategic plan tracker? Uh, so the next thing I'll point out are the, um, financial reports, I think I figured out what y'all were looking for, and I put it on one sheet. So we've got the revenues and, um, and then from the revenues, so you've got your, your general fund again, so July is the first tab. So you'd want to click on August, which is the second tab, and from there be able to kind of look to see how things are. Um, I think one of the things that I, um, have been looking at in the revenues and expenditures are the far right, how we compare in year over year. Okay, so, um, in looking at this, when I, um, I visited with Carrie, uh, our business manager to say, is there anything that, that caught you off guard, was there anything that, and right now, things are, are on track and nothing is, outstanding as a, um, as a notable item on either revenues, or, uh, the next, um, number two, which are the expenditures. And again, so if you take a look at your expenditures, and again, July is gonna be the first tab that comes up, so you'll have to click on the second tab, which is the August. Um, you'll see it break, broken down by object series, which is, um, so salaries and wages of all employees. And then if you look, scroll down to the next chart, you'll see, the expenditure is broken out by program, which are gonna be more designated. If you ever want to come back and look at and want to know like, oh, wait a minute, what were district support services, just click on the July tab, and if you hover over that district support services, you'll see the definition of, oh, that's right. That's what those, what's quoted into those areas. Okay, so that's gonna be consistently linked so that we can monitor those over the course of, over the course of the year. Okay, so again, here's another area where I, I've been looking at, um, year over year, off to the right. You've got your twenty-one, twenty-two school year, your twenty-twenty-one school year, and our current. Cause I think that's gonna be also a good indicator of where we are in relation to where we've been in the past. Any questions about, um, those two, those two areas? So then if not, I think we'll move on to the committee and organizational, so, um, Jake, I wanted to turn and, give you an opportunity to share, um, some of your, um, it's kind of, I guess, committee-related, kind of not, I mean, so Jake is our rep- our representative on our C and MREA, uh, committee, but Jake had an opportunity to do some, um, oh, and I'm gonna just turn it over and let you speak to what it is that you've been,
Yeah.
what you've been doing and, and how that kind of.
Sure, so I was elected to the Minnesota Education Policy Fellowship, which is a consortium of, superintendents, I'm actually the first school board member they've ever had, so that's kind of exciting, um, service cooperative directors, principals, things like that, it's kind of under the Lakes Country Service Cooperative, but I actually did figure out there's a metro and like a southeastern, Minnesota delegation as well, and so, um, I've been, been attending policy meetings up in Fergus Falls, learning about budgeting, financing, policymakers, how that kind of works in the, uh, local legislature to our city level, and then next to our national level, and so I was in DC from Tuesday to Friday evening for the AESA conference, which is the, American, um, edu- educational service, um, cooperative association, and so, we had some really interesting leaders and discussions there, um, all the way from pollsters for the election, to how, um, service cooperatives can work better with our school districts and how they can be a little bit more beneficial, because, we're, what part are we with, which?
We're with resource training institutions.
Yeah, but I think Amanda Teagles was there from them, from them as well, so, um, it was a very mutual, uh, good experience to learn with them, um, and then on Wednesday and Thursday, I was back on Capitol Hill, we met with Senator Smith, uh, Senator Klobuchar's office, um, I used to intern in the Senate back in the day, so I get to be back with my senator for a little bit, but, it is very interesting being upfront to see how policy works and how policy doesn't work, and there's that inside rhythm of the Capitol that, outsiders still don't work very well, and, um, it is interesting to note, still since January sixth, uh, you can't go in certain places in the building anymore, you have to be escorted by staff members, but, uh, more or less this experience was very interesting in the learning how policy is enacted at a federal level. Um, we got to meet with the Deputy Commissioner of Education, Joe McCabe, so that was pretty cool, um, and so some discussions were, um, had there, and I do have some links from some of our meetings and some of our, um, uh, PowerPoint presentations about what we discussed, and it's just, um, just a very unique and very interesting experience, and it's a continual thing, I'll be done with my policy fellowship. I'll graduate officially, they even give you like a little plaque and diploma thing, um, in September, so, yeah, very exciting.
Very good. Um, I'm interested to see how, when, as we continue our dialogue with Lakes, MREA, um, because C and MREA, remember, those are two organizations and entities, that advocate on behalf of school districts for legislative change. And, um, C, for example, so, um, C had our first, um, general membership meeting on Friday, when Jake was in DC, and so, um, in that, um, platform, there was a discussion about, um, what is the ask and what is the advocacy for our legislature, from our perspective, from the C membership perspective, and, and so, um, obviously, as, as the C members are, so C, which is seeking educational equity, is really about equity and funding, and as I've gone out and had, conversation with, um, at these, at our local forums, two questions, I guess, maybe it's two very common questions that came at both of them, was our, our rural school districts funded equitably or in the same way as metro school districts, and, um, and the most second answer is no, we're not, and it's, and we're not because of, um, what, what, I guess the fancy word is called equalization, so, meaning that, um, when we have tax dollars, the implication for our local taxpayers is greater, because we don't have the tax base to spread it on in some of our, that some of the larger school districts do. And so then that, that changes the, the way in which the landscape of, of funding and, and education, and specifically levies and referendums, it changes how that, dialogue and discussion goes in rural Minnesota versus metro schools. So that was a big discussion point that took place, um, on Friday. The other discussion that took place on Friday was really about, um, continuing to advocate for, money into public education from the surplus, because we all know that the legislature ended with one of the largest surpluses, ever, and there was not movement and change or funding allocated, to schools or to solve many of the issues, so, that, those are a couple of the things that came up through the C meeting on Friday. Um, and I would assume that as you guys kind of continue your work, there's gonna be probably some cross dialogue that takes place.
Yeah, it'll be interesting, we go to the Capitol in November, after the election, I mean, with some people, but it's really interesting when I get out there. Um, the, uh, feeding our future scandal just really bubbled up over, and if anybody hasn't heard, that is a massive, massive deal in the education world, like, yeah, it's bad.
Yeah, and it was, uh, it was a question that came up at one of the forums.
I'm sure.
Yep.
So I have a question about that, I mean, we all know it's inequitable, and it's not supposed to be, right, so, we know that, like, I don't understand how we can't move forward with, you know, why can't we move forward with legislation when it is supposed to be equitable?
So I think, I think what, what it comes down to is it's, and, and I'm not, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna speak in huge realities, because there's, there's kind of, so, the, the, the general formula for funding education is the same for everybody, so that's one argument, is, y'all get the same money on the general formula, okay, which is true, whether we have a student in, um, in Edina, or if I have a student up in Brainerd, or if we have a student in Alexandria or in Painesville, the, the per pupil formula is the same. Where it becomes different is when you, when you have, um, levy dollars that are coming from your taxpayers, how that impact and the burden lies on your residential homeowners, and that's all based on legislative, um, language that lays out, how the levies must be calculated. So, if you know anything about how quickly the legislature changes, um, that's why there've been some changes over the course of the last, of the few years, which is where, there was a lot of excitement when equalization first came into play, because rural school districts started to recognize, some additional funding, and that's where we now get, um, aid in addition to, um, so, so when you have, a levy, you can get state aid in addition to that levy, which helps to offset the burden for the taxpayers. Um, but the, the criteria and, and the components of when that can happen, um, they're really, unfortunately, quite complicated, because it has to do with the type of tax base and the type of, um, it, it's not, it's not simple maybe, and I would, I really wish it was, but that's, those are the things that legislatively, then our entities like C advocate for, and they, they advocate, um, sometimes it's, it's, coming up against people who would have to pay more taxes from a business perspective, and there's opposition to that, and sometimes there's, you know, so I, I understand there's, there's competing forces to equalization, um, but it's, it, unfortunately, it's just not been.
If the formula actually covered the cost,
Correct.
then it would be, but the formula doesn't cover the cost, and that's,
Absolutely.
and I know it's not simple, it's just frustrating when it's supposed to be equitable and everybody knows it's not. And then now it's placed on our local community, the burden of having our school function.
Yeah, well, and especially when, when the, the majority of our funding for all, for our, our school comes from the state of Minnesota. I mean, when that is the case, you would certainly hope to advocate for money on the formula, and, and just increase,
Right.
plain old, plain simple, just more money per pupil, yeah.
And equity is more interesting in every part of the state, like, we're probably one of the more ones that need, cause up in the Iron Range, so the I triple R B, which will kick in their own mining fund to support their school, so, we don't have anything like that.
Yep. So, um, thanks Jake for the update on that, um, any other, uh, organizational? Or was such a cat canceled?
Yep, that was so.
All right.
Okay, um, so for NHS, we just had our first meeting, it went really good, and we got to meet Mr. Boarding. He's really nice, um, we have a lot of plans, this year we, we had our first large group, but we also had an officer meeting. We're coming up with a lot of ideas, and we're excited, we're gonna start some bake sales, we're gonna start fundraising, so we can start doing these soon. Um, and then next week is homecoming week, and we've, student council, we've been just, we have, for the pep fest, we've been practicing some things student council's doing, and then we're getting ready for the coronation, which is on the fourth, the Tuesday. And then homecoming, the dance, yep, the dance is the eighth on Saturday, so it'll be fun, and it's a dress up one, so a lot of people are excited. Um, and we're doing pre-sale tickets right now during lunch for, and second train's breakfast, so that people can get it cheaper if they buy it now. Um, and then the dress of days, so Monday's gonna be PJs, Tuesday's anything but a backpack, we haven't really done that yet, it'll be fun. Yeah, it's kind of been popular in a bunch of different schools, so we're trying it out, um, and then senior alert tokens that day. But then Wednesday is country club versus country, it's another new one, we're trying to be creative. And then whiteout, and then last day is spirit day, so it'll be fun.
And then for sad, we just had our first meeting, it was at last week. And then we had our cinnamon roll, is how we raise our money, and I think Andrew said that pit, went really well.
Yeah.
For the first time this year. And then for sports, we have tonight is volleyball, and that's like, I think, all, grades, and then cross-country, which is at, Cronus Hill Club, and it's both boys and girls, and then the homecoming game is next Friday versus Holy Ford.
Yes, NHS will be doing concessions, that we're doing the home. Yeah, so we're just all, everything's getting rolling.
Yeah, busy.
I apologize, I was scrolling past my things, I'm passing. Uh, yes, again, so nothing your old business, we'll have a new business, and now going to you with a preliminary pay twenty twenty-three levy.
Yep, so, uh, this is a meeting where, um, the board needs to set the preliminary levy, as you can see, um, there's an, uh, point eight seven percent increase over the previous year, uh, you will see that our general, um, our general change is down three point three percent, and the debt service is up six point two four percent for a net change of a point eight seven percent. Um, so the recommendation would be to, um, certify the maximum levy, um, and that is a very, very common practice for school boards, because then, um, in December, if anything changes, you're able to lower that, and then the, at the truth in taxation, which we're gonna talk about in just a little bit, um, then that final, that final levy amount would be set.
Look for motion to certify maximum amount allowable for the twenty twenty-three levy. Bruce, and second from Jake, uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Post say no, carry. Truth and taxation.
So, um, by law, the district, uh, must hold a, a public truth and taxation meeting, uh, historic, has to be after six PM. Um, and our, our district has typically had a mid-December, midday meeting in December. Um, we have more student representatives that are present at that meeting, um, and so we have, the board really has two options, you can either, uh, change the, the traditional board meeting, um, to include the truth and taxation on the fourteenth. Um, I'm sorry, on December thirteenth at six o'clock, or you can do as you've done in the past and hold your, um, your business meeting in the afternoon, and then hold a separate truth and taxation session at six o'clock in the evening.
I have a commotion to do it just like we did,
Yeah.
last year.
Okay.
We can have the truth and taxation later, but want to meet with the kids, are the most exciting meetings that we have.
Yeah.
Great, I'll second.
So I have a motion from Bruce to remain with the same schedule of the afternoon meeting for business and the taxation at six PM, and a second from Cheryl. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Post say no, carry. Now lane changes.
Uh, so twice a year, um, certified staff are able to submit for lane changes. Uh, I just want to kind of call out the process and just a reminder of the way that that process works. So every staff member, when they are taking credits that would be, um, they would like to use or apply to lane change, they submit a form, uh, through the district office, which is seeking prior approval, um, and then after those credits are complete, they will, uh, submit the, they submit that they're done, and they turn in their transcripts, so, um, below is my recommendation for, uh, lane changes that have met all the criteria, and, um, they've met all the coursework.
For motion to approve lane changes as presented.
Someone.
Motion from Cheryl.
Second.
Second from Bruce. The discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Post say no, carry. Electrical status.
All right.
What you've been waiting for.
You know, actually, I, I, I do have to say, um, people have been very respectful and they've been very patient, um, and I, I wish I had a, a magical answer, um, but here's, I guess, the, the long and the short of it is, last week I received a twenty thousand dollar bid for a temporary fix. Um, and I, it would be for three games, and it's just really very difficult for me to come to the board, with our current status financially and say this seems like a really grand idea. Um, as a temporary solution, um, the, we do have, um, the home side of our field, um, has temporary power, um, it is able to run the lights, and I have contacted, um, a, an, a, different, um, electrician who has an elect, uh, and like an industrial generator, that they can fence in on the opposite side to run the, the, um, the visitor side of the lights. And so, uh, my recommendation to the board and, and to get us through is to, do this, not, not engage in a, a temporary fix to the tune of twenty thousand dollars. do this to not, not engage in a, a temporary fix to the tune of twenty thousand dollars. Um, because I, I don't feel like that's fiscally responsible. Um, and I also don't know that that's going to serve us long term. So by doing this kind of keeping things as they are on the home side and bringing in generator, uh, the industrial generator. And, and again, I've had people reach out and offer. And I'm, and I'm grateful for the ideas and the, and the thoughts of can I just bring our stuff? I've really looked at how do we make sure that our kid, that we don't have any safety hazards or issues. Um, and making sure that it, it, we also don't have anything wonky with electric, electricity when we've got so many people around. So um, what I'm, what I would suggest we do is, is have the temporary generator on the visitor side. The home side is run with our temporary power, get through the three games. And then what we can do is to find a long-term solution that does not involve the fuse work that is um, probably valuable from an antique perspective. I mean, to be honest with you, I'm sure some of those, they're, they're old. Um, the pole still sells in northern states power, if that tells you anything, you know? That's how old some of the, that work was. Um, but then, then we can, once we get through the football season and make sure that our kids have the opportunity to play those games on a home field as they expect, then what we can do is have a couple of different companies come in and give us some options. And then I can meet with the facilities committee and say, here's what I recommend long term. Uh, we do know that we have some um, uh, field repair um, on the north end of the football field uh, for some city water sewer um, work in the spring. So that might be, also give us an opportunity to coordinate some of that work and we'd have less disruption in the big picture. So my recommendation is to keep our temporary on the home side, bring in that um, industrial generator on the, on the visitor side. Um, but I just wanted to make sure that the board was in support of not engaging in a twenty thousand dollar estimate to, for a temporary fix. I agree.
I agree.
Okay.
Okay. So, but the most important thing, and what I think you want to hear is there's going to be football games at night under the lights. So that's, there's the moment, right?
Yeah.
So history behind that, the board had decided not to engage with the electrical company at the same time in the nineteen, said how that worked? I'd like to know if any of these people are still alive so we can blame them.
And it's, and it's interesting because from what I understand, and, and I would love if somebody had, I think this was in the seventies.
Yeah.
Is what I was hearing is that there was a, and I think what happened is um, back when it required so much power to run football lights, it became cheaper. Now, again, I'm kind of speaking on, this is very much not the gospel truth. So I need to, I need to add that caveat that this, what I was told is that it became cheaper for a school district to maintain and do some of the stuff on your own property versus having the lines maintained by the electrical company. Now, people that know more about electricity will tell me, Janelle, you're wrong. And here's the truth and we'll go forward. But it doesn't change where we are today. We don't have power to this deal.
Long-term planning, Bruce.
Yeah. Well, I think they've been there since nineteen seventy.
Yeah. How old they?
Sure. So it should be about the same time we built the high school here.
Hmm. Sure.
It's been there for a long time. I mean, lots of things can happen that you have no control over. So unfortunately, we have to deal with it right now. But.
And you know, one of the other things that I know that um, are the people who we've had asking uh, that we've asked to give us information, like take a look at this. There are two really major wires, um, high voltage lines that run underneath the football field. Well, you, it's, you were not digging up the football field today. It's just not, uh, you know, because so it makes it hard to know exactly where the break is. And, and again, I, I think the other thing that, that comes into play with that estimate um, is we are now talking about immediacy and we're talking crisis mode. So we're pulling people off of jobs. We're paying them extra to have them here immediately. So I'm hoping that by also going through this, so it's going to give us a, a much better understanding of the true cost.
We have all winter to figure it out.
Yes.
Unless.
I'm not waiting, I'll wait. Um, but one thing that will have to happen, and, and I do know that, you know, um, right now, if, if people have been out to the football field, they will see a conduit that's laying um, over the road. That does have to be buried because we have to be able to plow that gravel um, in the winter, because that has to be a fire um, alley. So that will have to be buried um, so that we can maintain. But it's, it's minor in the big picture. So, um, because I, I think if people wonder what in the world is that going to sit there all winter long? No, it's not. But we're also not going to do that in the middle of.
So we still maintain those, correct? The power lines there and stuff, correct? Or is XL now dealing with?
We have done nothing different at this moment in time.
Is XL want to take it over?
That's a question I don't have the answer. Yeah. And that's one of the things that I, and, and I'm, I'm hearing multiple perspectives of get away from high voltage, go, go to your, you know, but then I've had people say, well, actually it's, you should stay with high voltage. Again, one of the things where I think we need to have some multiple people look at it and look at big picture and give us our options. And then we'll make the best decision for the district long-term. So. So there's my electrical update.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I'm just eliminating.
Oh, come on.
I was.
That was good. Actually appreciated that joke today. Uh, we have uh, October eleventh, the work session and then our regular board meeting uh, on the twenty-fifth. And um, I, I don't know of any other meetings I have in my calendar for a committee or otherwise. So.
Any policy coming up? Um, I probably, I have not scheduled it.
Okay.
So.
Questions to that, looking for motion to adjourn.
Move the board to now adjourn.
Motion from Jake.
A second.
Second from Maggie. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose say no. Carrie.